Meeting of the Troy Planning Commission. Copies of the agenda for tonight's meeting are available at the entrance to the room. Additionally, the agendas and minutes of prior meetings are available on the city's website. The meeting will be conducted in accordance with the agenda presented or amended by the planning commission. The roles and responsibilities of the planning commission are outlined on the revert side of tonight's agenda. State law establishes planning commissions. The commission is comprised of nine members, all of whom I volunteer to serve. Members are appointed by the mayor and confirmed by city council. The other individuals seated at the table this evening are representatives of the city's planning department, the city attorney's office, and the city's planning consultant, Carlisle Wartman and Associates. If you wish to address the planning commission, please come forward when recognized and provide your name and address on a sign-in sheet. Please begin your remarks by stating your name for the benefit of the commissioners. All remarks are to be addressed to the planning commission, not to anyone else in the room. At this time, I ask that all cell phones, tablets, or any other devices that might disrupt this meeting please either be placed in silent mode or turned off. The roll call, Ms. Arneke, please.
Mr. Abkhedian?
Here.
Ms. Cruz?
Here.
Mr. Edmonds?
Here.
Mr. Faizan?
Here.
Mr. Hudson?
Here.
Mr. Kuppa?
Here.
Mr. Zanzika?
Here.
Mr. Tagle?
Here.
Ms. Howe?
Coram President, second item on the agenda, approval of the agenda. Mr. Savin has a comment to make.
Yes, for item number seven, which is the preliminary site plan review. It was a conceptual discussion for proposed millennial place apartments. The applicant sent an email to us yesterday requesting postponement from this evening's meeting to provide them with an opportunity to prepare responses to the items that were listed in our review letter.
Okay. And can I get a motion to approve the agenda with that item? Item number seven, preliminary site plan, taken out of the agenda?
Will move.
Mr. Edmonds, second?
Second.
Mr. Faizan? Roll call, Ms. Arneke.
Ms. Cruz?
Yes.
Mr. Edmonds?
Yes.
Mr. Faizan?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Ms. Kuppa?
Yes.
Mr. Zanzika?
Yes.
Mr. Tagle?
Yes.
Mr. Abkhedian?
Yes. Item number three on the agenda is approval of the minutes for the April 25, 2017 meeting. Can I get a motion to approve the minutes, please?
I'll make a motion. Move it. Approved.
Approved. Motion by Mr. Grant, second. Second by Mr. Hudson. Roll call. Ms. Arneke.
Mr. Edmonds?
Yes.
Mr. Faizan?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Mr. Kuppa?
Abstained.
Mr. Zanzika?
Yes.
Mr. Tagle?
Yes.
Mr. Abkhedian?
Yes.
Ms. Cruz?
Yes.
Item number four on the agenda is public comment for items not on the agenda. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to speak on an item that is not on the agenda tonight? See done. Move to item number five on the agenda. Preliminary site plan review, file number SPJPLN2017-0010. Proposed Shake Shack Northeast corner of Big Beaver and Crooks, 850 West Big Beaver, Section 21, currently Zone BB, Big Beaver District.
Yeah. Oh. Good evening, the planning commission. As the planning commission members, you approved a concept plan for this site in February. This is the 888 Big Beaver site. And as part of that concept plan, just to orient yourself with it, you approved in concept two restaurant pads located on Crooks, re-demolition and a new construction of a new parking structure with some retail pads out in front, a five-story apartment building with a pool, and four pads on front and on Big Beaver. To date, this is the Fidelity pad that has received preliminary site plan approval. And tonight, in front of us, is the Shake Shack building pad in for approval. This is the farthest west of those four pads, and it's the second pad that you have seen as approval for site plan approval. The applicant is proposing a one-story, 3,800-square-foot restaurant building. The overall site layout, parking, and landscaping and streetscape was approved as part of the concept plan, so I'm not going to talk any more detail about the actual details about the concept unless you have questions. So our review only considers Shake Shack building itself, building siting, the landscaping, the lighting, and elevations. We want to note that the building complies with the formage requirements of the Big Beaver district. They have placed the building at 17 feet from the Big Beaver right-of-way. The reason they did that was to allow for an additional area for plaza seating in front of the building. The landscape plan that was submitted is consistent with the landscape plan that was approved as part of the concept plan, and includes a mix of cranials and shrubs and does meet our orders' requirements. We do note that the applicant did not provide a lighting plan, and so we're asking that as part of the final site plans. The middle. Primarily, primarily important for the planning commission to consider is the elevations that have been brought by the applicant. We find that the applicant submitted a very attractive building and one that would add to the streetscape of Big Beaver. We do note that the elevations that were submitted don't appear to show the material uses, so we've asked the applicant to actually provide more detail on that as well as bring the material samples to the mean itself. In addition, you'll notice on this graphic above, the applicant didn't show any surrounding buildings, in particular, they didn't show the Fidelity building. So we've asked the applicant to provide a 3D rendering that includes the Fidelity building to make sure that there's some architectural compatibility between the two buildings, as well as the building into the rear. So in summary, we do support the development, we do support the building, and we are recommending preliminary site plan approval. With the applicant addressing any comments, if they receive some planning question regards to architecture, as well as the applicant's bits of lighting plan as part of the final site plan approval. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Carlisle. Any questions for Mr. Carlisle?
Have they proposed a phase in of the project, you know, as far as the deck, construction deck and the parking unit?
They did. And that was actually reviewed as part of the concept plan that was done. I don't have the details with me right now, but the parking deck is going to be the next, really, is part of, really, the next phase to be done. And it has to be done because there are moving so much parking to the site that they have to build out the parking structure.
So is it required to be built by the time the Shake Shack was done, or is there not parking on the site to come before the deck?
There's not parking for these two uses to be built, and then the deck would come in, the wood deck would come in. But their timing is, they're going to be very, very quickly on this, and the deck is going to be coming in very shortly, and they think the deck's going to be up very quickly.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Just taking.
The 3,800 square feet, did that include the covered outdoor area, or is that just a building, enclosed building area?
I believe it's just the enclosed building area that the applicant confirmed that.
If there are no more questions, yes, Mr. Grant?
Just wondering if the planning department consultant has an image of the Fidelity building so we can kind of look at both at once, or just depending on the?
We had asked for that from the applicant. Provided. We saw the white box, we said, put the actual Fidelity building in where the white box is, show what it looks like. And we hope the applicant has done that tonight. If he hasn't, we can pull up, we can try to pull up the Fidelity.
Okay. Thank you.
Approval. Yeah.
Ms. Cruz?
I don't have a question, but I would say that despite the fact that we don't have a rendering of what the Fidelity building is going to look like, my biggest objection, and I'm hoping that the petitioner can address it, is the lettering on the outside of the building that indicates burgers, frozen custard, fries. I would like to see that go away. We're on the Big Beaver corridor, it's part of the, what do we call the mile that's?
Golden corridor.
The golden corridor, right? I'm not sure that I like the idea of burgers, custard, fries as part of that golden corridor. So while I appreciate that they may have an image or an architectural style that they'd like to stay true to, I could argue right now that that's not going to match with Fidelity at a minimum, and then come up with all kinds of other arguments why that lettering should be eliminated.
Ms. Tagle? How does all of this signage compare to the allowable signage? And how are you looking at the signage per building versus the furniture of the entire property?
So this application went before the zoning board of appeals for a sign variance for the applicant's, you're with Shake Shack, correct?
Yes, sir.
Are you, may I engage? You're aware with the particulars of the sign variance that was sought and received?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Could I have him speak to the variance?
Yes, we'll do that. Wrap it up.
Okay. So the applicant realized that, I think that what you're going to hear, I can't speak for him, but what you're going to hear is this probably thinks this is important for the brand of the company, nonetheless. Signage is regulated through the sign ordinance, and the applicant either meets the sign ordinance or has received a variance to comply with the sign ordinance. Now, the issue of whether the planning commission takes the signage is inconsistent with the Big Beaver, that's related to the site plan application separate from the variance, if that makes sense.
How so? I mean, if he had, if they get a variance to do what they depicted on this rendering, what ability do we have if we don't agree with the appearance of that signage? What, I mean, what, how does that play out?
I think you have the ability to ask the applicant if he's willing to eliminate the signs, but at the end of the day, it's regulated by the sign ordinance, and they have the right to do it.
And they have the variance.
They have the variance and the right to do it, but you can certainly engage the applicant in dialogue.
Was the variance?
But I don't want to speak for the attorney. I'd want to make sure that she agrees.
No, I think you're saying it correctly. I am not aware of the zoning variance that was given, so I'd like to see what was proposed and what they were given.
Do you know what the variance was requested? Was it just an area?
I believe it was for the, this type of sign is considered like, I want to say a roof sign. It's a, there's a, I could accurately answer your question, give me a few minutes.
Well, maybe the petitioner can. Is it a static letter, or is it an LED-type sign? Do you know?
No.
Okay.
This is where, I'm not the liaison for the zoning board of appeals, so I'm not as involved in knowledgeable as the jurist is.
Any other questions before we ask the petitioner?
I was referring to Paul, not you.
Okay, if there are no other questions, well, if the petitioner is here, if he wants, please turn to the mic.
Yes, sir.
Good evening, everyone. My name's Chris Piper. I'm the construction project manager for Shake Shack. This proposed location would be Shake Shack's second location in Michigan. We recently opened a Shake Shack in downtown Detroit in the First National Bank Building. So Shake Shack, approximately 120 locations worldwide. We're excited to make this our second location in Michigan, and excited to be part of the community. The total square foot of the building, including the exterior patio, is 5,500 square feet. Total occupancy, 192 interior and exterior. Regarding the, can I speak about the signage right now? Okay, answering any questions? So the band of lettering signage is what I typically refer to it as. That is an exterior, externally illuminated sign. It's what is proposed in this design right now.
Illuminated?
Yes, ma'am. Illuminated with a LED strip light. This sign is housed inside a steel channel. I believe the variance was sought so we could comply with the total square footage allowable. It's part of the Shake Shack brand. We have it almost at every single Shake Shack restaurant interior, and sometimes.
Do you have it at the First National Building in Detroit?
Yes, ma'am.
Hmm. Hmm. Hmm.
Do you have anything else you want to add before we just open up to questions from the commissioners?
Well, honestly, this is my first time doing something like this. Usually, it's left up to the Shake Shack architects, so I'm not sure really how this works. It wasn't prepped all that much by the rest of the.
Well, that's enough information for now. If we get any more questions, any commissions that want to address any other topics or signage or questions, we'll open up to that. Any questions for the petitioner?
Just one quick one. It says it's externally illuminated, so does that mean that channel just bounces light off of the lettering, or is the, are the LEDs inside of each letter?
The LEDs sit at the bottom of the channel, sort of in line, somewhat behind the letter, which stands off of the channel from a backer plate approximately two to three inches off the flange and the face of the channel, so that LED strip kind of backlight.
Backlights. Okay, so it illuminates behind the lettering.
Yes, sir.
The lettering itself doesn't illuminate.
That's correct.
Thanks.
Ms. Tagle? How large are the letters? How large are they?
These band of letters?
The band of letters, yes.
I believe they are six inch in height.
I'll bet you they're more than that.
Six inch!
I don't have the sign shop drawings with me.
Do you know how much over the variance, or how much over the ordinance were you for the variance? I mean, if you were to get X allowable, was it 2X? Was it 3X? Was it, how much of a variance were you requesting as far as the area of signage? Do you know that?
Mr. Chairman?
You're not.
I have the minutes up now. So the reason that Ms. Kuppa was giving me a strange look was that this didn't go before, I misspoke. It didn't go before the zoning board of appeals, it went for the building code board of appeals, which approves sign or sign variances. Because City of Troy is a community that has a sign ordinance that's not part of the zoning ordinance, the zoning board of appeals doesn't consider requests, so it went before the building code board of appeals. So to answer your question, they sought two variances. One, a variance to provide 181 square feet of wall signs where 148 square feet are allowed. And two, a variance to install a roof projecting sign where roof projecting signs are not permitted. And they were successful in both variances.
Did it give you any, why were they successful? What were their arguments? What was the argument?
There was a presentation by the applicant. He provided an explanation of the proposed signage, specifically addressing the unique building style, architectural features, design elements, and visual view of the signage. The acting chair up in the floor for public comment. There was no one present to speak. Floor was closed. Excuse me, Ben. And they resolved to grant the two variances as a request for the following reason, and it was one reason, the variances would not be contrary to the public interest or general purpose and intent of chapter 85. And it was all present, three, all present, and it was fast. Thank you.
Ms. Cruz?
I'm sorry, again, what is the board that makes that decision?
Building Code Board of Appeals.
Building Code Board of Appeals. And is that made up of people like us that make up planning commission, or is that made up of staff?
It is comprised of, the city manager sits on it, and the other members are residents, with the exception of a representative from, I believe, Oakland County who sits on it.
So it's a resident-based board with the city manager as sort of the chair?
The chair is actually Gary Abether.
Chair is, I'm sorry.
Chair, yeah, who is a resident.
According to their meeting agenda, Gary Abether is chair, Teresa Brooks, Sandy Friesen, and Andrew Schuster. They sound to be obviously non-residents.
Sandy Friesen is a resident who's also.
Three people?
There's, it's a five, it's a five-member board.
Five. Five plus Brian.
Four.
Four plus, plus Brian. So four people on the board are making the decision for the whole city, plus Brian. Okay, thank you.
I have a question for the petitioner. You mentioned that this is a corporate image of Shake Shack. Do you, are you aware of any, of any location where you have a building that only has Shake Shack on there and not the other, not the other letters at all? And more of an urban suburban, similar to Big Beaver?
Yes, sir. I am. I've been involved in developing those locations. It's in certain municipalities and cities where we were unable to secure sign permits or variances, but it is Shake Shack's design intent to include these exterior band of lettering wherever possible.
Are you aware if the locations that were prohibited, the signage are similar to this one being proposed, whereas the first one in the community, or the second or third in the state, kind of just breaking into the market in that state? Are you aware if there is that similarity?
I believe no Shake Shacks coming into an emerging market like this did not have these band of lettering. Wherever we don't have exterior band of letters or in urban environments, New York City, Chicago, Dallas, I believe, but the urban inline developments, not a standalone building. Yes, ma'am.
Do you think that the name Shake Shack in and of itself does not tell people what it is that you serve on your menu?
No, I do not. I think.
Thank you.
Could you speak a little bit about the appearance, materials, colors? I don't know if we should take this literally, and I don't know if it's a dark brown, black, or, do you have any samples or any?
Unfortunately, I do not. I was not instructed to bring any samples. I apologize. What we intend for the exterior finish of this location is mostly material called ATAS. It's a corrugated aluminum panel. And that's the finish you see in the dark bronze behind where you see that large Shake Shack sign, the back corner. Like I said, corrugated, believe it's three-quarter-inch returns aluminum panels. That's what we do.
It's kind of an undulating form, or is it actually a kind of a, more of a standing seam?
Standing seam.
Okay. And there were some other forms or shapes on the elevations that took on a little different color. And again, I'm not sure what the color is, but are those the same material but just in a different color finish?
What elevations are you?
I'm looking at an elevation in, it's in the package, it's actually the, well, I see it in the first and the second elevation. It's kind of a triangular shape. It would be on the apartment lot elevation, and also appears to be on the, what would be the east side elevation?
I believe, I'm not sure what you're referring to, but I believe that's.
Greg, can you put those up?
I did, yes.
I mean, that's close enough, but yeah. So that's an Ephesus finish?
I believe so, sir.
And then the horizontal banding, excuse me, in the higher box where the Shake Shack lettering is, is that the same material as the, where the vertical standing seam now?
Yes, that's just a different orientation of the material.
As long as we're on this shot, the, I can't tell if it's a diamond-shaped pattern, but you see on the exterior elevation, number three, to the far left, next to the stucco, to the left of the stucco?
Yes.
Yeah, what is that?
I'd have to refer to a different page in the documents.
Is that safe? Could you zoom on it? Ben's going to zoom, just like keep this shot up.
I think it looks like the same material. It looks like diamonds up there, but I think it's.
That was one of our comments, that there was no material applications on the plan set.
Yeah, I guess I'm not necessarily objecting to what I'm saying, but I just don't know what I'm saying. You know, I think personally, I need a little more information before I could sign off on this.
How would I be able to get material samples to you? Unfortunately.
Our next meeting.
The next meeting.
Let me.
Yes, Ms. Edmonds.
I guess I'm, well, I don't necessarily agree with Ms. Cruz's comments about the banner sign. I do find it disturbing that we don't have samples. Isn't that a standard procedure, Mr. Savin?
Yeah, we did request samples. Did you not get the request?
I'm not sure who the, honestly, who the requests filtered through.
There was a person from Shake Shack who was communicating with us very, very frequently, I forget her name, first name is Ty?
Yes.
Ty? And we requested it two times with Ty. Again, the correspondence that we had with her was, she was contacting us almost daily there for a while, and she indicated that she would forward on the request two times to me, that she, so I'm a little disappointed that there's no material services.
So am I. So am I. That request was never, unfortunately, I work with Ty every day, and that didn't make it to my attention.
Ms. Edmonds?
Hi. I don't know how the rest of the planning commission feels, but I think this item should be postponed until such time as we can see actual samples. That's what we based all of our approvals on.
Well, even to expand on that, we asked the petitioner, as we do all of our petitions, show these buildings in a realistic context. We have a building under construction right next door, and all that's represented is by a white block. And please don't take this personally, I'm not getting on you, but when Shake Shack representatives are asked to present something to this commission, we're not doing it just to ask the question. We expect that it be presented. And so I agree with Mr. Edmonds, I cannot answer on this tonight.
I just wanted to add one thought to the material request. I think considering that this is your second location in Michigan, your first location in Troy, I think this body, as well as you corporately want this location to be successful. This is a unique opportunity to make a very unique location with your brand, with your name on it, that we all want success. But we're just trying to get to the last hundred yards of this project to get a comprehensive understanding, especially the material that's being used. The 3D renderings are a great depiction, but the materials are essential so we can really get a handle on what's going on that pad. Yes, Ms. Savin?
When this project was conceived, and we talked about this conceptually, you remember when we first talked about fidelity? Because fidelity, we reviewed and approved kind of in good faith, knowing that they're going to come back with an overall concept plan. And at that time, staff and the planning commission agreed that it was important to understand how these buildings were going to fit, each with their own unique design and unique brands. How was a fidelity going to fit next to a Shake Shack, next to a, you know, approximately the Seasons 52, et cetera? And there was an overall architect who was to coordinate all the design. And I agree that, I think it is. And I agree that, I think it is important, we've got, to talk in really simplistic terms, we've got what appears to be basically a black building next to what is essentially a white building. And I think it's gonna be a sharp contrast. I'm not saying that's a bad thing. I think it could look really cool. But I'm wondering how they're gonna cut contrast against each other. I think they could make each other pop, and it's gonna work really well. Or maybe, I mean, I think it's a legitimate question to ask the applicant to provide the context and the materials.
Sure. Ms. Cruz.
In addition to the conversation with respect to the materials that are going to be provided and how the Shake Shack would fit in next door to the Fidelity Building, I do want to be mindful of how the LED lighting, advertising fries, shakes, burgers, frozen custard fits into the overall landscape of what we have determined to be our golden corridor, that area of Big Beaver, which is, you know, our boulevard that we want to use as, as sort of the gateway into the city of Troy. I mean, this is going to say something about who we are and the image that we want to project. And, and as you approach that Coolidge and Big Beaver intersection with Somerset Mall and the upscale shops and restaurants, Eddie V's, Ocean Prime, Capital Grill, we want it all to fit. I'm not convinced that a restaurant that is called Shake Shack, which clearly defines what it is that it serves, is enhanced by adding lit LED lettering for the fries, the custard, the burgers, the, the whatever, whatever. I mean, at that point, it just becomes a glorified Coney Island. I don't see that on our golden corridor. I don't have a problem with the Shake Shack in and of itself, but I would like for it to be a tasteful Shake Shack.
I would like, along with the samples, if they could also provide us some pictures of where they have other Shake Shacks and how the signage fits, because I've seen the one in Detroit, and it's, it actually is quite tasteful. I also want us to keep in mind that when we had the contact presentation and Ms. Howe was here, she had mentioned that Troy High and young people would like a place like this. You don't want it only to be like an Eddie V's type of venue all around that in those pads. You want a place that even young people can enjoy. And I think that Shake Shack, the way that it is, may not be perfect, but-
No problem with the Shake Shack concept in and of itself. Just don't think that the signage all lit up with the lettering adds value.
Mr. Crandall.
Well, I agree with you partly, although this lettering is backlit. So you're basically looking at the lettering in black and just the wall being lit. So you're lighting up a surface that's black with white light, and it'd be pretty subtle, just to let you know. I mean, it's not gonna be like glaring in your eyes illuminated letters, so it's-
Fries. It's not tacky. Fries.
Yeah, I understand. Okay, but the, the other count I really had, I wanted to focus on the materials, not only of Shake Shack, but I can't recall the materials of the Fidelity Building. Was that stone? Was that limestone, or was that, I can't remember what that was.
I'm remembering myself.
Yeah. But I would like to, when we, when we see the new, we have the comparison of both buildings, I'd like to know the materials of the, of the Fidelity.
Just to follow up on the, on the signage and the lighting of the signage, I'm looking at the drawings, and it basically looks like a steel channel up there. So I, I don't know if you could, can provide us with a picture, excuse me, of that detail in other applications so that all of us can really see, you know, what that looks like. I think I understand what you were telling me. It's a, it's a, it's a channel that the lighting is behind the lettering, and the glow of the light is on the face of the channel. It would be nice, I think, just to give everybody an understanding of what that product will really look like.
Yes, sir. I can get that for you.
Mr. Edmonds.
I was gonna ask Mr. Savinett, did the person you were in contact understand not only about the materials, but about the 3D renderings of how it would look next to the Fidelity Building? Was that communicated too?
Yes, it was.
And she agreed?
Well, we sent a total of three emails in regards to this, and all three had mentioned the need for material samples, as well as 3D renderings.
And the response was that she looked forward to the information on it for us.
Ms. Edmonds.
Was she, did she work for Shake Shack, or did she work for the developer? Do you know?
I believe she works for Shake Shack.
That's correct, sir.
Ms. Edmonds.
Maybe Mr. Savinett can answer the question. Would a variance is granted by the building code appeal board? Is the variance just as to an increase in the signage volume? Or is it a variance as to the proposed sign with its dimensions and construction and illumination?
Well, the variance, I don't think the variance specifically referenced the illumination.
So what the variance did was increase the available amount of signage for this building? But it didn't direct any kind of particular signage, how it was to be displayed, or anything of that nature?
It granted a variance for overall, I believe, wall signage? And, and, and the, approved the location insofar as it approved the projecting roof sign?
So it didn't say it had to be an italic or bold or Helvetica, or so there may be some room there if the commission finds the signage is obnoxious, for lack of a better word. Maybe redesign the signage so it appears to be more in tune with the area than big block letters, for instance, with fries.
Well, you- And that's what I indicated earlier, is we can always ask now, Mr. Tagle asked the applicant to bring some examples of what this is gonna look like and make it clear exactly what is proposed. Typically, you know, we have got a sign ordinance that's different from a zoning ordinance. We, we typically, with the exception of some PVEs, signage doesn't, isn't part of the site plan approval. In communities where signage is in a zoning ordinance, it is part of the site plan approval. The difference with this is we've got a sign that is integral to the overall design and look of, even more than, than typical because of this projecting roof sign. I'm not a member of the planning commission. I think it looks cool. I don't have a vote, so what I think doesn't really matter. But I do understand the lighting. To me, to me, the, the trigger is, is, is the lighting. And how this is gonna look, you know, at night, is this gonna be blinding? Is this gonna, is this gonna draw the eye to fries, or is it gonna-
Burgers, frozen custard.
Yes. Or is it gonna be subtle in color? I don't know. I've never seen a Shake Shack. So I, I, I think you asked an excellent, an excellent request for that information.
I'm gonna say, though, I'm looking at the application package that was put together for the building code of appeals, and what they've submitted is pretty detailed in terms of the lettering and the size and the location. There's even something called facelit channel letters with push-through burger. I mean, I don't know if, it seems to me this may have already been considered by-
That'd be a fair comment. Given that you-
That's an interesting term. Facelit, to me, doesn't say backlit. It says to be facelit. So if I look up at a letter, I'm seeing the lighted letter, not the background lighted in the shadow of the letter in front of it.
I just read, I'm just-
A facelit.
What's written there is different than what I heard.
The facelit sign is the, the Shake Shack sign?
Oh, oh, that's the bigger one.
Yes, sir.
Why would you approve the sign before you approve the building?
We, we actually got the, the variance request before we got the, the site plan application.
That, that's backwards.
Not from that.
If you don't think, why, why would you approve the sign before you knew what the sign was going to be attached to?
I've done this kind of work professionally. They, they don't wanna provide us with architectural drawings with a sign that doesn't belong there, had to be approved. So they wanna prove that first to say, now we can put that on our drawing, this was approved. That's why they do it that way.
But if you don't, but if you don't like the sign, then what? Right? Because that's, that's the situation.
It sounds like maybe we need to request the petitioner to actually show us at least maybe two or three examples of other locations that you have with this exact same, exact lighting, with the LED, exactly what you're proposing here, so we can actually see what it looks like at night, in context with an actual urban suburban area. Maybe if it's something similar to this mixed to another building or even inline, whatever location you have, just to feel for what's really going up there.
And again, that's all attached in their previous submitter, so that should be easy to pull together.
Is there any?
Are there actual examples of other sites in their, in their focus?
So maybe, is there any chance we can, you could send those, send those materials to the planning commission to see what they view? I think that would be appropriate.
Mr. Tagle.
Is it what it says, the offensive part, or is it how it's applied and how it comes across? I mean, it's visual.
It's the visual. I mean, I think that Shake Shack-
It's not the words they're using.
No, but it is the words. It is the words. It's okay. So first of all, first of all, we have a Shake Shack, which in and of itself indicates what the menu items are more likely than not going to be. But I don't have a problem with the Shake Shack itself, for, for some of the reasons that Ms. Cooper indicated. I mean, we have a demographic here in Troy that's going to very much enjoy the Shake Shack. I'm probably going to enjoy the Shake Shack. But I'm also cognizant of the, the piece of real estate that it's going on. And that piece of real estate is valuable. And at some level, to me, it commands a certain level of elegance that is not achieved by having a backlit sign, an LED sign, or a sign that surrounds the building advertising shakes, fries, burgers, and frozen custard in relation to the quality and the level of other restaurants that surround the area.
I would offer also that we have a very diverse population, and I'll tell you, when my mother moved here, she didn't even know what Halloween was. So to assume that everyone knows what a Shake Shack is going to have may not necessarily be the best of something, because we have a very, very diverse population. And I don't know how many of them would understand, so I-
Ocean Prime doesn't advertise its menu on the outside. Neither does Capital Grill. Neither will Eddie V's. But-
Well, juxtaposing that, right down the street is a steakhouse with a sign saying steak. So now we're quibbling over shakes versus steaks.
I, I think it's a losing battle, Karen.
Can't help it. It's a, it's a prime piece of real estate. It's on the golden corridor. We talk about design standards. We talk about how we want that boulevard, the world-class boulevard, to look. I'm not saying the Shake Shack is inappropriate. I'm just saying let's eliminate the burgers, the fries, the frozen custard from it. That, that's all.
I, just one comment. I, I guess maybe looking at this a little bit more objectively and stepping back, if we critique this sign so much, maybe we need to look at everything that's been approved up until now, up and down Big Beaver, and say, are there any existing signs that don't even meet the standards or don't even look as good as what's being proposed? And have to request to have those changed, the font, the lighting. So I, I think in, from one perspective, that's kind of opening up a can of worms, because there are existing signs that, if, I think if we drive up and down Big Beaver, that probably don't even look this good.
For example?
For example, we can-
For example?
Start driving tomorrow.
For example? So there's not one that immediately comes to mind? Exactly. So if it doesn't immediately come to mind as one that is inappropriate, then it's probably okay. Right? But if there's not one that immediately pops into your mind as, oh my gosh, I hate that sign, then, then it's probably okay.
I guess I, I wouldn't say that a sign that would be, that I would hate, or somebody would hate by looking at it. It's just that it would be more of a-
Let me tell you, the sign that's totally inappropriate on Big Beaver is the Renaissance Spa. That LED sign that's at the corner of Big Beaver and L'Evernoi. Right there's your sign. I, I don't want more of that. I don't want more of the Renaissance Spa.
I think that's a backlit sign, maybe-
It's an LED.
LED something.
LED, with, with graphic pictures on it for plastic surgery procedures.
It's like a television. It's a display sign, not-
I don't wanna open that can of worms. I don't wanna make that the standard for the golden corridor.
I recall, I think we had this conversation before about the sign ordinance, and there are, the sign ordinance, there are some loopholes in it that allow applicants to actually erect signs that are, are not, not necessarily enforceable in some ways.
Yeah, I don't wanna open the discussion about non-conforming signs for probably Beaver here. But I would say that this isn't necessarily what they were supposed, it's not a loophole. They went through actual, the board that reviews signage, and they approved it. So, you know, sign, sign code is not, zoning code is not under the purview of the planning commission.
Now, to piggyback on this, what most, most applicants seek their sign approvals after. Typically, the sign is a, they know what they want, but they, they, they wait till they have site plan approval before they give the sign. In this case, it was reversed. They submitted the application before. But as Mr. Crandall indicated, is this is an integral part of the brand and the design. They felt it was important to seek it before. And this, that's the process we have, given the fact that we have standalone sign ordinance. And the board that reviews and approves variances to the sign ordinance is the building code board of appeals.
Ms. Cooper.
I think that we earlier decided that we want to postpone this, so rather than continue discussion, I would like to propose that we have a resolution to postpone it till we get the materials, what it looks like in its, you know, suburban, urban settings, and also to get the samples and any other information that we can get, including the approval from the building code, code of appeals.
And the code board of appeals.
Ms. Cruz, can you comment?
I, I, I understand what, what Ms. Cooper's saying, and I don't necessarily disagree, but I do think that in all fairness to the petitioner, I mean, unless I'm the only one here on the board that has an issue with the sign, I, I do think that we can ignore that for the next meeting if we do postpone it. I have been in communities where McDonald's have been, have had to modify their golden arches sign and put something that is street level, as opposed to high in the sky with the big golden arches, because it doesn't conform to what that community wants in terms of signage. So it wouldn't be the first time that a, a franchise, or a national chain, or a widely recognized brand would be asked to modify their signage in order to conform to a community's desires. Even McDonald's and Wendy's have done it.
Ms. Tagle.
Can I ask the attorney a question?
Yes.
This signage package has been approved, and I don't know the level of detail, but it sounds like a fairly significant level of detail they presented, and it was approved. Is it done? Is the conversation over?
From my perspective, I, if you have a sign ordinance that's not under the purview of-
Right.
Of this board.
Right.
They submitted detailed, it looks like to me, I mean, I'm not an architect, I, I don't do plans typically. It looks to me very detailed, like they get down to the, the size, the location of the building. And it sounds like in the write-up that was done for this, there was someone else, where'd it go? Talked about, you know, this is not going to, sorry, I've lost it. This is not going to be a detriment to the community. So I'm just not sure, continuing the discussion, what goes to what end. Here, this is what I've been brought here. The proposed signs for Shake Shack will be well-suited to the area and will not be a detriment to the surrounding properties. I don't know if that was a write-up from-
That was, that was-
Or if that was their suggestion. But that, that's part of what was considered by, by the board.
So to my question, is it done? I mean, is our, I mean, it's not the purview of this committee, so I don't, or this commission. So I don't know how we can act on it if it's not part of our-
It's not something we can ask the applicant as part of the discussion to consider changing what they've already submitted. But if they say they don't want to, I'm not sure this board has any authority to-
Gotcha. Thank you.
We can suggest that they consider it.
Right.
Regarding the request for perspectives, this is a perspective drawing. So that person that you communicated with thought they're doing what they're supposed to by presenting this perspective- So that person that you communicated with thought they're doing what they're supposed to by presenting this perspective drawing. We are pretty clear.
We made it clear that it was, it was as related to fidelity actually.
I, I remember it's the white box fidelity. Please have to show the belly details.
Just white box, right, ready.
I understand. I just want to make sure it was, because, you know, you just said perspective, they did that, but they, okay, great. One other quick thought. One thing about, I was in signage history for a long time, and I've observed signs throughout America's history. The typical burger place back in the 20s, they had that line around the buildings. It's, it's sort of like a, yeah, it's, it's a, it's sort of a homage to that era. You know, so I'm just saying it's part of the design.
Would you describe that architecture as a 1920s style?
No, it's not. They're just, they're just imposing that element.
Mr. Southern.
So we've heard the attorney's opinion that this is essentially a done deal, but we can always ask. Like, I said the same thing earlier. We can always ask. We can ask to eliminate the lighting, reduce the lighting. We can ask to remove it, but they, they've got the approval. But given we have at least one planning commissioner who has concerns with the projecting roof sign, is it appropriate to get a consensus to see if, is it one member out of nine? Or is it the majority? Because if it's one member, we speak by, by, and we can put this issue to rest? Or if it has lights, we can have a dialogue with the applicant?
Sure. Mr. Faison.
So do we know if it's a backlit sign or the letters are lit? Wasn't there some question about...
If you're referring to the band lettering?
Yeah, yeah.
That's backlit. The, the, the letter itself is, is non-illuminated. It's externally illuminated. There's an LED strip right behind that letter that shines up and back to illuminate behind it to create that, you know, glowing effect. And I am happy to provide pictures. I have samples in my office.
But now I recall now, it's the Shake Shack sign then?
Yes, yes, sir. The Shake, that Shake Shack sign right there is facelit. Yeah, typical to, I'm sure what you've seen on there.
I think what we, what I heard Ms. Cruz say is that, so there's two, two aspects at least to this sign, the band. There's just the actual image itself, the lighting, the, the, the location, the font, the size, and then there's the actual content, the actual words. And what I, if, correct me if I'm wrong, Ms. Cruz, but what I heard you say is you have more objection to the content than the actual style or the font or the size, more, more to that.
I don't really like either. I don't really like either. But like I said, when you advertise burgers, shakes, fries, frozen custard, you, you reduce it to glorified Coney Island.
And I think what I heard the petitioner say is that that's part of their corporate image, the corporate logo.
Right. Well, McDonald's has theirs and Wendy's has theirs, and they've modified their signage.
And the ideal condition and what they prefer is that they have Shake Shack with everything else on the facade of an elevation and not just Shake Shack, especially probably their second location in Michigan. So what I'm hearing the petitioner say is that's critical to their image, to their business model.
I'm sure McDonald's and Wendy's says the same thing.
Right. And, and I'm not, I'm not disagreeing with them. I'm reiterating what I heard them say. So are there any other commissioners that object to the content of the words? Or the actual lettering, the font, the size, to the degree that Ms. Cruz does?
If I'm an island, that's fine.
I think we should go around and ask for it.
Sure.
I, I, I mean, but I'm just...
Well, I think you gotta, you gotta put it in some type of a consensus question, so.
Well, the question is, do you object to the content?
Let's just take that right there.
Let's just do that first, and then we'll address, we'll ask the second question will be the font, the size, the lighting. So we'll start with the...
But it's the third question, do you object to that signage at all? I, I mean, it's not, it's not just the content. It's not just the size of the lighting. It's the whole, it's the whole package for me. But if, you know, like I said, if I'm an island, I'm alone, that's okay.
Well, let's start, let's start with the, the words, the content. Do we object to those words being on the facade of an elevation on the Golden Corridor, Big Beaver District? Keeping in line, keeping in context, other businesses that have other words that represent their business and what service and what product they sell.
On Big Beaver, like, for example?
Any, any other business.
Let's answer the question, please.
It is.
We can, they just raise their hand. If somebody says yes, then they should raise their hand.
Who objects to the content of the, of the words on the facade of Big Beaver?
Mr. Eric.
Okay. Any objections to the font, the size, the lighting as presented by the attorney and as much information as we have at this point?
I don't think we even know the size of the letters, do we?
No, I think from the application, that that's a done deal. I mean, it's been decided, it's been approved, and nothing we can do about that.
That's right.
But we like our head.
Well, okay.
Okay. I guess we can, you know, what's going to be?
Resolution to postpone.
Other issues on, we're still requesting the petitioner to provide material and more information on the material. Is that...
Rendering, fidelity, with specifically with the fidelity building?
Relative to fidelity? Okay, so then I guess there is consensus to postpone this until we get more information. Mr. Southern.
Mr. Chair, just two things. One, we have a meeting in two weeks. So if, if you hurry with, with this information, we can get you on that meeting. And two, I will send a link to the Building Code Board of Appeals agenda for other members.
The background of the jury.
Shouldn't you vote on the postponement?
Yes.
Can I add one more thing, sir?
Yes, sure.
I know there was a question regarding the lighting plan. The exterior lighting, with the exception of the, that band of lettering, LED, that all that is provided by the developer. I can request that information, photometric studies or whatever is desired, but that, that is not something provided by Shake Shack. And I believe that as the developer would have already have had that lighting approved.
That, that's correct. However, in your elevations, you do know, you do know some building lighting locations. So that's what, that's why, that's why I was asking about building lighting and photometrics. So if you're not providing exterior building lighting?
Okay.
You're not required to submit fixtures for light that don't exist. But if there is building lighting, exterior, your elevations seem to indicate that there were going to be, you do need to submit those fixtures.
Submit the fixtures and detailed sheets on the fixtures themselves?
Yes.
Okay. Understood. Anything else? Photometric studies or...
Was that approved previously? Or was it just a concept draw? Did you actually see the photometric?
Lighting?
Yes.
No, we have not submitted photometrics for lighting.
We should have the photometrics.
To the concept, we can have the whole site, yes.
So basically, before these lights, these lights here, before these lights go in, we need to prove, we need, the city needs a review and approve the photometric, photometric light.
And he said that.
If it's a developer that's doing it, before these lights go in, the developer is going to have to submit a photometric light for the lights.
Okay, understood.
I think Ms. Cruz.
Ms. Cooper, would you like to...
Well, second, she made a motion.
Yeah, I'll second. With the postponement? Am I going to read it?
Sure.
Okay, page 11.
Yep, I got it up. Preliminary site plan review file number SPJPLN 2017-0010. The proposed Shake Shack on the northeast corner of Big Beaver and Crooks 850 West Big Beaver, section 21, currently zoned BB Big Beaver District. Resolution number PC-2017-05. Resolve that preliminary site plan approval pursuant to Article 8 of the zoning guidelines as requested for the proposed Shake Shack restaurant located on the northeast corner of Big Beaver and Crooks, 8A8 West Big Beaver, section 21, within the BB Big Beaver District. Be granted to people's own, I'm sorry, subject to, subject to the following. And that is requesting additional, there's a bunch of corrections that are in the planning consultant report. Can we list those? Like asking for the samples, asking for the site elevations with fidelity in the background and with renderings that include the materials and also renderings of, or existing applications in urban and suburban settings.
Yeah, I think so. Photometric lighting, was that, was that part of it?
Yeah, yeah.
That was in the report.
Okay.
Second?
Second by Mr. Krent. The vote, Ms. Arneke.
Mr. Faison?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Mr. Krent?
Yes.
Ms. Cooper?
Yes.
Mr. Zanzika?
Yes.
Mr. Tagle?
Yes.
Mr. Apahedian?
Yes.
Ms. Cruz?
Yes.
Mr. Edmonds?
Yes.
So the item has been postponed, and as Mr. Del not mentioned, probably rescheduled for two weeks or so.
Well, we don't have a date, but, but I think they, they've got something to shoot for. We do need, if you're asking me, certainly call and any questions you've got, we can help you.
Okay. Thank you. Thanks for your time. Thank you, thanks. Moving on to item number six on the agenda, preliminary site plan review file number SPJPLN 2016-0034. Proposed Eaton Maple Crooks Plaza, north of Maple, west side of Crooks. 1721 Crooks, section 29, currently zoned, and on Maple Road District. Mr. Carlisle.
Thank you. Nice for you as a proposed site plan application for a two-story mixed office and commercial building which is located in the southwest corner of Premier and Crooks Road. Just north of Maple, you can see the building, the current site is outlined in print. The existing building on that site will be demolished, and the applicant proposes to construct a building that includes 4,200 square feet of office and approximately 9,100 square feet of retail. The building and uses is a permitted use in the Maple Road mixed use, or Big Road form base corridor. The one issue I do want to note that I, in my, in my report, I know that there, the details of the stormwater were not indicated. The applicant has been working with engineering department and has confirmed that they are providing underground detention within the parking lot four to deal with stormwater management. We do still encourage the applicant to include stormwater best manager practice where they can, but for the most part, stormwater is going to be handled underground in the parking lot. In regards to site plan itself, the applicant is placing the building at the hard corner of Premier and Crooks. They are eliminating, there are two curb cuts located currently on Premier. They're going to eliminate the one curb cut and move it farther to the west. They're keeping the existing curb cut that they have off of Crooks Road, and they are providing a cross-access from the parcel to the south. The proposed building meets all of the form-based requirements for Maple Road in terms of building placement. The applicant has provided the necessary parking of 50 parking spaces. However, we do know they are deficient in bicycle parking. They didn't include any bicycle parking on the site. And secondly, they have not indicated a loading space. The loading space may be waived by the planning commission, provided that the applicant provides evidence that parking, or sorry, loading space is not needed. I also want to note that there was a typo in my report in regards to the overall site landscaping. In one set, one part I noted that they needed 20%, another part I know they need 15%. In the form-based districts, 15% is required for site landscaping. We do know that the applicant is approximately 0.5% short, it's about 150 square feet short of overall site landscaping. But there are opportunities on the site to add additional landscape without having to seek a variance or alternative means to get that. So there is room around the paved area, concrete area around the building can be narrowed up a little bit to put in some reasonable green space, or they can convert what's concrete there. They can convert it to paver, a brick, or some other material. And that also is permitted, is to count towards site landscaping in the form-based districts. The building is proposed primarily of brick, stone, and glass. We have asked the applicant to bring material samples to the meeting tonight. I hope, I hope they follow through on that and provide material samples. And floor plans and elevations has been provided. In summary, we do some more... In summary, we do recommend former site plan approval with those items that are noted in our report and in the resolution. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Carlisle? Questions, the applicant is here.
Good evening, planning commission members. I'm Brian Biskinner from Polyengineering. I'm here with Phil Jarrett. He's the architect. And they did a blazingly awesome job at the presentation. We, we don't have any problems with landscaping. Any comments there can easily be taken care of. The, the only question I feel you're probably going to have is loading and unloading. And we, we do this often, and it basically comes down to you have a low-intensity office, retail use, and they don't typically use larger trucks or, or there's not a lot of loading, unloading activity associated with it.
Yes, Mr. Southern.
So this is a vertical mixed-use building. I just want to make it clear to everybody that it exists. We keep getting told that this, this can't happen in this setting, and this is a proposed vertical mixed-use building. This is kind of cool.
Yes.
You know, this is some, this is what we have been hoping for, to see more of.
I'm just curious, do you know, do you have any, you know who the tenants would be for the site?
We do have. It's presently set up with a number of entrances. The way it's laid out is for smaller, smaller retail shops and like that. But I suppose some could occupy the, the entire space underneath, but it's hard to say. It's a smallish building in and of itself. But go ahead, Bill.
Well, I can mention that this, yeah, it's going to be retail and businesses. I mean, type B use and office above, but, you know, the lower, the retail portion of it could have businesses in there as well. And there could be possibly a couple of restaurants, but they wouldn't be like big dining-type restaurants. It might be more of a, like a potbelly or something like that, you know, where there's minimal seating. And then the second floor would be all office. Most of the first floor would be retail-type uses and some business on the, in the lower level, too. Like a Verizon store would be considered a business use that would be, could potentially go in there, something like that.
I'm just curious, with those different types of uses, do you have the type of signs they're proposing to have, on a sign?
What type of signs?
Yes, sir.
Well, the pub, the signs, if it's a chain, national chain, they'll want their own logo-type sign up there. And I'm assuming you have a sign ordinance where we would have to apply for signage separately and get the sign approval and so forth, which we would do. But we just put generic stuff up there right now that says signage, 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 signage. Yeah, so chances are it's not going to all end up red signs like that. That was just kind of a standard, just kind of show where the placement of signage could go. But it's going to depend on the tenant and what they want there and what they can get approved at, at the time. So... Whatever meets your sign ordinance.
Do you expect multiple tenants for the office space above, or is that, how is that laid out? What's, what's the intended use?
Well, right now, we have it pretty much as an open plan, and we're, we have a couple stair towers in there and an elevator and a common lobby area to come up. And we have an area where a proposed corridor could go in. Now, if one tenant takes the whole space, then we won't have a corridor, and there could potentially just be one tenant up there. But it also could be multiple smaller tenants, too. So we, we're allowing flexibility in that area depending on how it fills in. And we also provided some, I don't know if you noticed on the plan, on that lower roof there, we provided an outdoor area for the office users to have an outdoor space, like an outdoor plaza-type rooftop terrace in there. Yes.
Have you developed similar projects in this area or southeast Michigan in general?
Similar, well, I've done office buildings and I've done retail with multifamily above. And I can't really think of one where I've done where there's been retail and office above, so it's a little bit unique. I know I have been kind of involved with a project more of inspection services and... I know, I have been kind of involved with a project, more of inspection services in Farmington Hills, in Farmington, at, where is that? It's on Grand River, right where 96 comes in, there's a building going up that's, it's pretty much very similar to this. So that has actually two, two stories of office above and all retail on the first floor. So starting to see more of that. I've seen other ones around, too, where there's retail on the first floor and office above.
And just one follow-up question, just a general information question. So you said you have developed retail and multi-tenant above?
Yeah, yeah. Not Troy, not Troy, but other areas, yeah.
In this general area?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
No other questions for the petitioner? Mr. Edmonds?
I'd like to see samples of the materials there.
Well, unfortunately, I didn't know I wasn't aware we were going to do anything, so I kind of sampled, and I wasn't able to get brick samples, although I know a brick is my most important thing. But we, because it's all brick, if you can look at the rendering here, I'll just kind of point out that this would be a stone look here and here, but all of this would be, we had three different colors of brick, I don't know if you know on the drawing, we had brick A, B, and C. So we had like a darker brick, kind of a medium, and a lighter brick. And they're all going to be somewhat neutral tones, I think, this is, it'll look very much like the rendering here, but you know, I'm happy to bring, and I'll gather those brick samples, I'm sorry, I was kind of, I think it was notified at the last minute that we were going to need brick samples tonight, and probably it was in your ordinance that we needed to do it, and we didn't see it, so I apologize.
Well, the stone, you've got stone and glass.
Well, I do have, I wanted to show you the, a lot of the design has, like, I'm just going to point out, all this in these areas, it's all a metal panel system, which you probably seen, it gives, it gives the building a little more of a modern look rather than your just your typical strip mall look, it's going to have a much richer look. So it, and this will be very modern, but we've taken more of a traditional shopping center look, but introduced some of that metal panel all the way through here. So all this banding and so forth, we do the metal panel, but we're still introducing stone, so really trying to pull the two together. So that's, I can pass it around if you want. This is the window frames there, actually, that'd be the window frames, and that'd be more of the panel. And then, stone wise, we're just going to, I did bring one sample here, and this is one that I, had some dirt on it, but it might be like a lead stone type look. So up in here, and then, this might, this is probably going to be more for like a band, we're not going to have a lot of banding on this, we're not really showing it there. I probably get dirt on your carpet right now, I apologize, but. So we'd have some sort of stone like that, it might look like this. We haven't finalized the colors on that yet, so I probably wouldn't want to come back. I mean, of course, we're hoping to get approval tonight, we always are, but I probably will come back with a little bit better samples, but you know, we're talking this type of stone. I kind of, that color right there is what I'm kind of looking at. There's another one called a southwest blend, which is a little bit lighter than that. I thought that was too light, but it's going to be somewhere in between these two, maybe something like that, kind of a, a little more of a lighter type stone, lead stone up through there. And then glass, I did bring a glass sample. This is like a low-y type, you know, it's going to have a little modern look, and I was thinking something that had a little bit of a, I've never really seen it there, but a little bit of a blue tint, maybe, a little bluish-green, kind of give it a little more of a organic look about it. Does that have a cooling? Yeah, this is a very energy-efficient glass. Can pass that around, too, if you want to look at the, some of the values there, talks about the energy side of it. But the rest of it, yeah, so the rest of it's brick, and I don't have the brick, but like I said, we have three different colors of brick, and we'll pick out some nice brick. And then we probably don't want to see it.
The orientation of that presentation, is it the southeast corner we're looking at of the building?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, that was the idea of putting some little towering right there, so it attracts the attention. It's probably not, it may not be called Eaton Plaza, too, I think that was the name of the existing building. I don't know if we have an exact name for it. The owner, I think, was called Maple Crooks Plaza or something, but.
We require you to name it for the application, if you want to change it down the road, you can change it.
Do you have some suggestions for a name?
A southbound corner has.
That's good.
Is the, is this building vacant at the site?
I know the, my client, the owner, was talking about wanting, demolishing it fairly soon, so I guess I'm assuming it's.
We have a, we have a member of this community down in McInnes who's been in that building for years, and he moved.
Yeah.
I was out there.
He did notice for them to move up, because he's like, demolishing this as soon as he can, so.
But he's the existing owner now?
Yeah.
He owns the building?
Yeah.
On your owner?
Yeah.
That's good. Communal, I'm interested that they're, they're proposing to improve the area, that's very communal.
I agree. That building needs replacement.
Yeah.
It did.
Service purpose.
It's a service purpose.
It's a service purpose.
It's a tire.
Are we ready for resolution or mark?
I just wanted to compliment the, whoever was the landscape architect, it's a really nice group of plantings and red hills and grasses, it's very nice.
Yes, Mr. Krant. In the past, when they haven't had things totally complete, there were a few things that were always sticklers that we wanted to have complete, and I know Mr. Evans just referred to the, and I agree, it's nice landscaping, they needed additional 153 square feet. That's not a heck of a lot, I mean, a four-by-eight sheet of plywood is 96 square feet, so it's, you know, it's just a little, little stamp. But it is a minor thing, and while the final approval, make sure it gets into the rest of the beautiful, then I could see going ahead with this.
We, we confirm that all the requirements as part of plumb site plan are addressed in the final site plan as well.
We have a professional engineer certified in the state of Michigan who's read the report, has agreed to it, and he knows that part of the file is going to have to give us 150 square feet of landscape.
Indeed.
I think there is a, just, just even from the rendering, there is a really good mix of material, even brick, the diverse colors of brick being used, the glass, the combination of that industrial metallic look to it, it's just, just a, I think it's a definitely good mix, excellent for redevelopment on that site.
I may just present the proposal you have heard, resolution.
Please, go ahead.
Here's all of the, that preliminary site plan approval pursuant to article eight of the zoning ordinance, as requested for the proposed Eaton Maple Crooks commercial building located in the west side of Crooks, fourth of Maple, 7029 Crooks, section 29, in the MR Maple Road District, be granted substitute applicant of the following. One, provide required stormwater management, including incorporating best management practices. Two, add zoning data table to the final site plan set. Three, add a bicycle parking. Four, provide loading space or provide evidence that one is not needed. Five, resement landscape plan, either with 153 square feet of additional landscape or converting some of the concrete sidewalk, on the building to break, to break stone or pavers, I haven't remembered. Right. And six, resement lighting and floor metrics plan, ensure compliance with section 1305 of the zoning ordinance, including indicating property lines and pole height, providing building fixture details, and reducing lighting levels to more than, have more than one foot handle along the property.
Thank you. Can I get a second? Mr. Faison?
Your eyes are good.
Roll call, Ms. Aronike.
Yes, another question, one more question.
The, the request for the loading space or providing, and the reasons why, is that your decision as a, as a director? How, I mean, I guess I've heard the applicant said we don't need it. I don't know, you know, again, I'm not trying to be difficult here, but what's the criteria to say they've proven that they don't need it in this application?
Well, the applicant stated that, that the typical delivery truck, where I would say is a typical delivery truck, is basically a cube van, cube truck, a box truck, cube van, whatever, pulls up UPS, whatever, pulls up, guy runs out, or a woman runs out, brings the stuff in, gets back, takes off, doesn't need a loading and loading space. So I guess to clean that up, we could eliminate that one requirement, take that right out.
I agree. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. And we're good for the roll call, Ms. Aronike.
Yes.
Oh, we got a second for Mr. Faison.
Okay, good.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Mr. Krant?
Yes.
Ms. Cooper?
Yes.
Mr. Zanzika?
Yes.
Mr. Tagle?
Yes.
Mr. Apahedian?
Yes.
Ms. Cruz?
Yeah.
Mr. Edmonds?
Yes.
Mr. Faison?
Yes.
Resolution passes. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you, product commission members.
Thank you.
Don't like disappointing for the president. I will. Why are you so?
I know, and I work for, for the council.
Moving on to.
Oh, yeah, okay.
Skipping item number seven on the agenda, moving on to item number eight, we should probably comment on it on the current, do you have anyone in the audience that would use this to?
No one.
No one? And we're at agenda number nine, agenda number nine, planning commission comments. Ms. Edmonds, start with you.
Yes, the only thing I would just ask is that when Mr. Southern took the chance to speak, that he spoke to the meeting last night about the storage facility, and that's it. Thank you.
No comment?
No, thank you.
Two, two quick things. The whole issue of signage has come up again, as far as who approves it, even updating the signage. I know I brought this up before, and I know it's not a top priority management to, to go ahead with that, but you know, it seems as though we're being more concerned about that, more critical, and I think we, I think you should relay that to the management, that I think should be of a higher priority than what was presently being accomplished. And that, because it is, I've been on planning commissions, other planning commissions where we do have approved signage, and that was a big, major component of the site plan. So I would really recommend that you relay that to management to pursue that modification to make that signage ordinance. Second, my second question is about the 888 building. Julie, I know you said that it was going to court, I was just curious about the retention basin, if that, if that has ever been resolved?
Excellent question, yes. Judge Warren issued an opinion last Friday, May 5th. He actually found in favor of the 888 building, meaning that the reversion had expired, and that they own the property, that that's in question.
There will likely be appeals. I don't know what that does to the project, I know that I had a conversation with the attorney who represented Summit Bullsher, and he's talking about, you know, filing injunctions and things of that nature, so stay tuned.
Yeah, so potentially that, as far as the drainage from offsite, was that the issue?
That was not really the issue, that was our internal issue, was what, you know, what the applicant was going to agree to do in terms of stormwater detention, the detention detention.
Right.
The issue in the lawsuit was simply whether or not the reversion for the property had expired. Who, who owned that, they were calling it the detention pond parcel.
What reversion?
It's a property, Mr. Hudson could probably answer better than that. It's a, whether or not the property there, when the parcels were split originally, there was a language, an agreement that allowed the property to revert back to the previous property order, if certain conditions were met, or if they weren't, whether they were or weren't met, so that was what was being litigated. Who owned what they were calling the detention parcel?
But it's loaned from the JSA property. Yep.
That's not, that was not really an issue in the, in.
I mean, it's still going to.
It's an issue for us. Well, they've agreed, as part of what we approved, as part of the site plans that we reviewed, the conceptual review that we approved, you know, I, I don't know if you recall, I asked questions of the applicant. So you've agreed with engineering that you're going to continue to detain the same amount of water that is currently detained, and they've said yes. And that's, some of the engineering is, is perfectly.
Very good. Thank you. Thank you.
Mr. Krant?
The only thing I wanted to do is thank Phil for the comment about the signage, I think this, we've got to take a serious look on how the signage is handled, and I think other cities that include the signing ordinance under the zoning ordinance probably should be looked at as a, as a possible way so that we can, it'll be our, part of our curfew to look over the signs that are coming up on the building, because they do impact the look of whatever, wherever they, you know, they're applied. So I agree, we should have management look seriously at bringing some kind of a, maybe a meeting, meeting of minds, bringing in city council, maybe us as a joint, and also sign manufacturers and sign installers, and looking at other cities, and what they do as far as ordinance-wise, and as far as what they do as application, what's, what's being done. Because signage is changing, and we, we're kind of, I feel like we're behind a bit on that.
Ms. Cooper?
I have two things unrelated to planning commission maybe, but one of them is next week, actually, I think it may have started this week, but at Detroit Historical Society, they have a phenomenal program, if anyone has some time to go over there and see it, it's called Civil War Immersion Day. And it started close to eight, nine years ago, where each of the middle schools, their entire eighth grade goes to the Detroit Historical Society where they have not been since elementary school, and they rotate around the museum with experiences that were reminiscent of the Civil War as part of their history unit on the Civil War. It's a phenomenal unit, so just if you have time, swing over there and see. That's one thing, and the second thing is, on May 24th, just because we've gotten a lot of questions, we've been working on this for a while, at the Parthea Temple, where I'm an active member of the, that particular house of worship, we're having a meeting house at seven in the evening. So I'll remind you again of the next planning commission meeting, the week day after that, but it is open to everyone in the community, there's, there will be a link on the website that you can register for it. Because we've gotten an award, Farmington Chamber of Commerce on its architecture, I figure people want to see what's inside. So, please feel free and.
Mr. Tagle?
I'm happy to be on the committee that gave me the award, the church thing here, and it is a beautiful building. I mean, there's some pretty amazing things that, components in that building that were made in India and brought over here, so the craftsmanship that you see are from people that, I mean, it's, it's not, not like it's made here. It's a beautiful, beautiful building, so I would encourage anyone that has the opportunity to, to take a look, so, that's all.
Mr. Faison?
Nothing for me.
No comment for me, Mr. Brent, and Mr. Southern.
Sorry, Hal, it's not here this evening, she informed Kathy and I that she has, I think she said four AP exams tomorrow?
Or this week.
Or this week?
Yeah.
So priorities, I guess, you know, yeah, I mean, kids these days. Also, last night, Mr. Edmonds, you were watching, obviously you were bored last night, you watched the, when I presented the.
I'm never bored watching planning or city council.
Watching me present.
Oh, yes. No, you did outstanding, though.
I presented, I presented the application for the easy storage conditional rezoning application. There were numerous residents who spoke in opposition, I didn't count, but I would say over 20, Mr. Edmonds.
At least.
At least 20. And at the end of the day, it was denied by a, by a two to five vote, so two, two in support and five opposed. And the, the main reason is, that as I saw, and Mr. Edmonds, you can, you can add to this, I believe, the issue was compatibility with neighbors and the bulk enassing of the building in height. Did you agree, Mr. Edmonds?
I agree. And then the other thing, I just wanted to, I thought the mayor made an interesting comment at the end after the vote, saying that perhaps there needs to be a joint meeting again with the planning commission members and the city council to align more carefully, more squarely what we want versus what they're willing to grant. So I think we just have to, stay tuned.
I believe he said something to the effect that, given the, the last two conditional rezoning applications, first was McQuarrie, which was a seven to zero recommendation, and the second, easy storage, which was a seven to one recommendation, that both were denied, and that the, the two bodies were not necessarily aligned, and I think he, I think he said something to the effect of, planning commission is going to be asking, asking what's going on, or something like.
Yes.
But, you know, maybe, I don't know. Thirty, if you remember, the, the height of the flat roof was 34 and a half feet, and then the tower element, the height was 38 feet, and the maximum height of a single-family residential was 30 feet, so it was higher. But I think, in context with the massing of, it's a, it's a 110,000 square foot building. I think that, that combination was...
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Cruz?
I can only speak from my personal experience, but, you know, people that have approached me, where I play tennis, over here at the Troy Racket Club, at my daughter's school, and some other places, have indicated, or have made comments to me that I interpret to mean that at some level, people in the city are struggling with the idea that we're quickly losing green space, that there's some value on being able to, you know, drive down a street, pull up to an intersection, or whatever, and see grass and trees, and that, the perception at some level is, we are very willing to give up our green space in the name of development and, you know, money and whatever. So, I don't know if some of the opposition with respect to the used storage, you know, because right now, that is sort of green space there at the corner, and, and people seem to be appreciating it, and so, you know, we have to continue to strike that balance between what development does this city need and truly enhance the city versus, you know, the appreciation that, that most of us have just for nature, for the critters, for the birds, the butterflies, the trees, whatever. That's my comment.
I think that's a comment, well, these are a, a lot of projects that come before us. I mean, I think we, as a body, we, one of our goals is to preserve as much green space as possible, even the cluster ordinance that we worked so hard to put together, that that was intent there, one of the goals was to preserve green space. But I think specific to this one project, the easy storage, if I recall, some of the residents that spoke when actually that project came before us, they weren't so much in favor of green space as opposed to this project, because they were actually in favor of a cluster development. I recall, there are some residents actually even suggested that. So, maybe it's not so much preserving green space as they want, they want the choice to choose what goes on a private piece of property as opposed to letting a developer put a large structure on there as opposed to a cluster. So, I, I think the same thing with McClure. The residents weren't opposed to development, they just didn't want, they just wanted three single-family homes.
Single-family homes, right.
And that was, so everybody has their, has their preference of what to put on somebody else's property, if it won't include preserving green space.
What, what concerns me most, and maybe perhaps Mr. Frank can comment on this, but I, I get concerned when something is approved fairly unanimously at the planning commission level and recommended to the city council. City council denies that, and in the case of McClure, now the developer has filed a lawsuit. I, I don't think that's a good way to, to run a city. I just, maybe just, Frank has some comments on that.
So, Mr. Edmonds, you've stolen my thunder, but that's, it went all right. Yes, so the toll rob cut, we have been sued. Lawsuit came in last week, and that is one of the things that is outlined in their complaint, that we had a seven to nothing vote in favor of McClure, and then we have the city council return it around, and their allegation allegedly, you know, capriciously arbitrarily denied. So, I don't want to speak too much about the, on the merits of the suit, obviously, but, you know, I will be handling that lawsuit on behalf of the city. We also received last week another lawsuit, zoning board of appeals decision regarding Troy Star Hospitality. We have, this commission hasn't seen that. Oh, okay.
Take action, because I have to go to Zoney.
Okay, so I could remember the sequence, so, yes, they...
Is that what it named?
Yeah.
And you were told.
Yes, yes.
Yeah, we've seen that.
Okay, I, I mean, I know I had seen it. So, yes, they, they sued, they, but they filed what's termed a claim of appeal in Oakland County Circuit Court, which is, which is the proper, which is the proper procedure. So, Ellen Motzne will be handling that lawsuit on behalf of the city of Troy. I don't want to speak too much about science, but Mr. Motzne also currently has on his plate a lawsuit involving our sign, sign ordinance. So, I don't expect any changes to the sign ordinance anytime soon until those issues are resolved. And then, piggybacking on Mr. Edmonds' comments about what the mayor said, Ms. Bloom, before last night's meeting, Ms. Bloom had said to me that she would like to come to this board and do a training session. According to her records, it's been three years since she's, since she's been to this board. So, she's doing a training session with CBA. I don't know if that date has been set yet, but she would like to come to this board.
What was it, Sunshine?
Just, Sunshine laws, just general overview of what, kind of what we talk, what is the purview of this board, what are, what are the responsibilities, what are, what are we reviewing? So, I, she doesn't have a date for that, but she would like to do, she hasn't done that like seven, three years, over three years.
Ms. Ziegler?
I think, you know, the issue is with us is that if the zoning ordinance allows something in a district, and we, and we hold for it, because, because it does allow for it in our zor, or, or, it was, it's, it's more or less our hands are tied, and I think that's really what our concerns are. And I think, you know, we're not appointed, we're appointed, we're not elected. I think that's what the whole purview of, of why you have an elected board to, to handle those types of decisions that may not be exactly allowed or not allowed in our zordar. So, that's, that is why they're elected, and if the community wants to elect someone different, with different positions, then that should be the case. It's a very difficult position for them to be in, but if they're elected, they have to take the position that, that may or may not be popular, and if, and, and the calling, that's, that's what happens. So, sometimes the courts will intervene and they'll have consent agreements that may get around what the, the issue of the communities want, but that's what, that's what judges report, I guess, but that's what consent agreements handle. But, but I, it takes a lot of responsibility on a, on an elected official to, to state his feelings and apply what the, what the community's wishes are.
Ms. Cruz?
I, I don't know the details of the sign lawsuit that's going on that Mr. Motzne will handle. I will say this, I do know that there has been some discussion with respect to billboards.
Right.
And if it has to do with billboards, I, I, I see no need for any billboards in the city of Troy along the I-75 corridor. I don't see that as, as a benefit, as an enhancement, and probably more of a detractor than anything. So, that's just my two cents on that, on signage.
I'm all in favor of scheduling another joint meeting with council. I don't know if that would be good to have that scheduled after the city attorney schedules her meeting with us for the training or prior to that, but I think that would be beneficial for all of us to just...
You know, it's going to be a very sensitive meeting, because you're going to be saying to council, we know better, we turned it around, and they're going to tell us, well, you don't know what we need, and you're not paying attention to that. I think we've got to be very careful in how we have this discussion, that we've got our own jobs to do. If some of this turns around, you know, I'm going to guess it's on the special use provisions, where you can interpret those five conditions, either way you want to go. And ultimately, whoever you file at court and would have had a decision's going to be is one that's going to rule. But I think we're both on the same road. Maybe they just don't think that we're following the path that they expected, that we should be taking. But, you know, it should be a very constructive meeting. I don't think anybody should be pointing fingers at the other one, saying, you're right, you're wrong. But it should probably be structured a little better, I'm thinking, than we've had the last meetings. It, it looks like it's really a high-class dog and pony show. We go around the table, and you get a few minutes to express an opinion, there's no follow-up, there's really no direction. It's sort of a free-flowing discussion, and I, I think that if we're going to have a joint meeting, let's have a, an agenda focusing on what seems to be the item for discussion, be it the direction that we're going, or, or do that, and spend some time on it, and...
One hour is insufficient.
One hour is great. To both, that, your comment and also one hour is not sufficient to have a meaningful meeting on what I think is the topic.
Yeah.
I'm sorry.
I think what we need is something similar to the retreat that we had, where we can actually have, you know, two, three hours of just dialoguing, open discussion, have an agenda, discuss, maybe, you know, discuss some of the projects that actually have come before us where, where we, we had divergence on, on votes or on, on our perspective of where, you know, where, what project fits where, especially on Big Bear, and, and we really can't do that in an hour, you know?
Right.
I think three, four hours is probably just scratching the surface of, on some of these topics, if we just start going around and everybody contributes to the dialogue.
Yes, Mr. Ziegler?
I would also ask for consideration that instead of talking about the zoning ordinance, we talk about the master plan, because honestly, what we're talking about are higher-level issues, I believe, that if the direction of the master plan is wrong, then let's talk about that.
Right.
But from all that I've been involved with over the last umpteen years, we wanted to change the direct, we took a 30-year-old master plan and tried to bring it up to date, and so we, we instituted some language in there that we thought, will we do that? And now we get projects coming before us that appear to go in the direction that we've put into master plan, and they get past this board, and they're, yeah, they're unpopular.
Right.
You know, and I guess my, my concern is, if the issue, if we're not following the master plan, or the master plan needs to be changed, let's get that on the table and talk about it. It'll get to the zoning ordinance, but the core issues are, where do we want this city to go in the next number of years? You know, the big elephant in the room, too, is when you appear as a resident opposed to it, with 60-year-fellow residents packing the council chamber, that's a pretty intimidating force for people on council who stand for election. It is. That's part of the problem. I, I understand that, but there's 60 out of how many hundreds of, or not hundreds of, but 80,000 people, or whatever we have in this city. So, I mean, it's like, it's...
I know, I know, I know. But it's like, yeah, I get it. I look out my kitchen window, and I see those green trees over there for the last 20 years, and what do you mean they're going to get cut down and, you know, I mean...
But to your point, without addressing the master plan, we'll see more valuable controversial projects and more issues.
Yeah, Mr. Edmonds?
When, when the master plan was updated, I don't ever recall any questions or significant comments by the city council who approved it, by the way, or when we had hearings. You know, the public was kind of, yeah, not there.
It's not until it's in your backyard.
That's correct.
Well, and people don't know, you see all this writing and the drawings, until you apply it to an actual situation, they don't really understand.
No, no, I agree.
Right, I mean, the master plan is just a massive document, and every resident waits for the project to come that's in their backyard and to see how we interpret the master plan, which nobody's going to sit down and read both.
You know, maybe the city needs to sell information on what a master plan is, what a planning commission does, what a zoning board of appeals does, what a sign appeal board does. So, they understand, but it's probably a losing proposition that we're going to convince anybody, or even have them read it, but maybe something in the Somerset Gazette or the magazine the city puts out every six months or so with information, you know, maybe a page on, here's what a planning commission does. You know, it tries to design a map for the future of the city, and...
Education, an education program.
Well, I hope, let me just add another, I, I hope that we as, as a commission and the council are looking at a bigger picture than what's going to happen next to me or behind my lot. That's not the issue for this city, and you're going to get opposition, like you said, you're going to get opposition from that, that close radius of whatever is around that development. And I, I just don't think that is the best direction for the city. Well, it's not, but that seems to be the practice.
Wait till the civic center hits.
Yeah.
Ms. Kufa?
Yeah, I think that's what the joint meeting should be about, is more about how do we balance the need for what's in my backyard versus what's the common good?
Well, that's the master plan, though.
Yeah. Yeah, but I think that's what we need to...
The city used to put on a program called Citizens Academy.
Yes.
And it was, I hesitate to say this because it means more than I meetings for me. I have a lot as it is. But I think it was really effective, because citizens were able to learn about the fire department, police department, the various planning department, and all the items, I think, as you said, Mr. Hudson, like the zoning board of appeals and building board of appeals, and the master plan, and the rezonings, what are these things? It's, like, not a lot of people are going to pick up the master plan and read every word of it, or the zoning board, which is 345 pages long. But, but they'll pick it up when, when there's a project next to them, and they've seen it. It doesn't affect it, it affects them.
And it's interpreted, they're interested.
Right. Piggyback on that, the, the applications for the, all the committees have that question
on them, and I don't think it still does. Did you attend a Citizens Academy? So, it's a...
I was just curious if they were generally well-attended, the Citizens Academy? Did you give a...
There was a waiting list, is that right? I think there was 16 or 17. Yeah, yeah, I did, Tom did.
We did, yeah.
Was it, did you enjoy your wife?
It's an outstanding program.
Absolutely. It gave you a good insight.
I think it was deleted because of the fact that it, you know, it required so many city staff resources.
They still do the police department version.
They do.
The sign of our presentation.
But is it, did the wide scope...
Not that I know of.
And it didn't have the fire department Thanksgiving dinner either.
That was a good one.
That was perfect.
Okay, I, I guess then, we're, I think, all in agreement that setting up a meeting with the council would be beneficial, if we can do something that is more than a one-hour meeting, I think that would be...
Maybe a Saturday morning or something, or Friday.
But it's a question whether they want to revisit the master plan, because I, I think that, you know, the detail of the master plan, when you actually, when you actually develop something, like McClure, for example, the properties of the west developed before the properties of the east, then they had residential in the back that really controlled, but they were one of the biggest people that were against the proposed development to the east, the park. So, I don't know if that's a function of the displeasure of the, of the presidents, or, or is it the range of the, the zoning districts, how far back it went, the, on the rezoning, or, you know, for the master plan? So, I don't know if they should revisit it, or, I guess it's going to be coming up in the next couple of years, but something that had detail probably should be handled, if they're having that, having the issues at the city council approving these, these, these sightlines that are allowed in our ordinance. But I think, Phil, for me, I want to, I want the bigger questions answered. You could probably look at that master plan and pick out, I don't know, half a dozen of concepts or directions that we felt were important for this city. And I think the first question I would ask them, all of them, are you still on board and agree with this concept A or concept B? Now, if they are, well, then the next obvious question is, where are we, where are we not connecting here between the projects we see, you know, within the framework that we have worked with, and, and the denials that they're giving the council, at the level of council?
I think just to piggyback on what Mr. Tagle, what you said earlier, I think the, the purpose and the vision of the master plan is, is long-term, and its scope is not just every single individual project. And I think it would be in the detriment of this body, or just the city as a whole, that we go back and have to be forced to tweak the master plan just because there was a project that was denied, or that there's a lawsuit on a project that we actually didn't agree with on council, because that, that shouldn't be the path that we should take to tweak the master... just every single individual project. And I think it would be in the detriment of this body or this, the city as a whole, that we go back and have to be forced to tweak the master plan just because there was a project that was denied or that there's a lawsuit on a project that we actually didn't agree with on council. Because that, that shouldn't be the path that we should take to tweak the master plan just because now this project got, got denied and it, it's causing, it's causing contention. It, I think the, the question that needs to be asked and answered is what is the larger scope? What is the long-term vision that in, in every single project that comes before us should be, should have that litmus test?
That's the whole point. The attitude has changed.
Right.
Our vision for the master plan or the vision of the master plan is different than what the city's councils is.
It's not, though, because they approved it.
But I don't think they realized what they approved. I don't think they realized what they approved. I mean, I'm not trying to be critical of them, but I mean, that was a major change in, in, in what was there before.
It was.
And it was a massive undertaking. And, and the reality of it has consequences that I don't think they expected.
The council, the present council was not in seats when we did the master plan. It's a whole different body. And maybe the, the thought process has changed. And maybe John's right, we ought to take a look at the focus. Maybe it's getting blurred.
It was not, yeah, but often you didn't update everything. Everything was updated in 15.
Everything, I thought it was revisions.
Just revisions.
It was revisions. It was, it was a five-year update on the master plan.
But it was a complete plan. We were coding everything before that, too.
Yes.
We made a finding that it was in very good shape.
Ratification and a revision.
We made a finding that the master plan was, for the most part, in very good shape. We had some focus areas that we focused on, on our revisions. But otherwise, we updated demographics and other relevant information and stayed the course.
And I think there was at least one or two joint meetings with the council and the planning commission just to discuss the master plan through that process.
It was.
But that's a good point. There are at least three people who weren't on the, on council at the time.
That's true.
At least three.
And then one, one example on a smaller scale we can look at is cluster development ordinance that, that we passed recently. And the project that just came before us, the Rain Tree project, I don't remember one resident that was in favor of that. So there was objection from, from the neighbors, from the residents, yet we anticipated that when that ordinance was put together, when we hashed it out, when we made changes to it, and we anticipated that there would be cluster projects coming through almost, almost immediately. And there would be actual resistance from, from the neighbors. But if, we, our, our role is not to go back and tweak the cluster ordinance now just because there's opposition to, for a specific project.
Right.
Because when that was hashed out, all the details of the ordinance were put together, that was a very meticulous process. It was well thought out. We, when that was approved. So kind of on a larger scale, the same thing with the master plan. What I said earlier that a project not being approved isn't, should have required that we go back and revisit the master plan and tweak it to accommodate the next project that is coming down Big Beaver, the Big Beaver quarter that might create contention.
I think residents, I think Karen hit the nail on the head when she said it's when it gets in your own backyard. That's where the people, the residents come out in opposition. And then you have an obligation, a responsibility, an ethical responsibility to listen to everybody's comment. But in the end, for us anyway, I don't know about council, but for us, to make a, a decision that's in the best interest of all the taxpayers, not just the residents.
Do you have no more comments?
We'll see.
I guess we are adjourned. Thank you.